It's seven o'clock. We'll call regular meeting of the city council to order. Ask that you join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We respect the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Back to our old habits. Good evening. I welcome you to the council meeting. I'd like to recognize the Wesleyan College students. It's our tradition. And we're going to ask each of you to stand up where you are, face this camera, give us your full name, where you're from, and what your major is. Starler. Girlsburg.
Okay, well, I'm Iris Aloy. I am from Buchanan, and I'm a political science and English double major.
Hi, I'm Katia Brown. I'm from Baltimore Berlin, and my major is business management.
I'm Alex Oldacre. I'm from Weston, and I'm a writing major.
I'm Jacob Foster. I'm from Gaslight. I'm a criminal justice and accounting major.
Luke Campbell. I'm from Pittsburgh, and I'm undecided.
Ron Q. signed in to speak. Ron, what's your issue?
Right now?
Yep.
Oh, my goodness. You first. Why don't we come over here to the microphone where I can get right in front of the camera without him having to do anything?
Okay.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. I noticed the ladies not here tonight, so gentlemen, it's appropriate. I have a letter here from a company called Home Service out of Lancaster, Pennsylvania that says important information regarding your water service line. This concerns me because it's addressed to me personally and my address, and the records indicate your property is not covered by a water line service coverage. And I realize it for what it is, but my concern is that there are senior citizens out here that will not recognize it for what it is. Just a solicitation letter might think it's something that they have to do to provide them water line maintenance coverage or something. I've seen other letters like this before, and on the back, you know, it says that a water line could cost you up to $2,385. That's going to scare me if it told me that and I had to do that. But my concern is that this, these letters coming out from this are reflecting like it might be something coming authorized by the city council and that these people think they have to buy this.
Ron, I don't know this company at all. We had, council had endorsed another organization. We review their literature before it goes out. We take special care that they don't mislead, and, but this, this organization, I don't have any idea who they are. I talked to Waterline Warranties Inc. about these folks, and they said, oh, yeah, they knew about them. But they, they're not, they made no contact with the city, and I would encourage anyone who, read, read the name of that again.
It's Home Service out of Lancaster, Pennsylvania.
Home Service out of Lancaster, Pennsylvania.
Or Home Serve, I guess.
Home Serve, Home Serve, and throw it away. They, I'm not sure they're a reputable outfit. So, if you get one from Waterline Warranties, and that's what it is, if you choose to buy a warranty, and their letters that they send with that, as I said, are subject to our review before, before they send them out, and if it's misleading in any way, at the beginning, we had some problems with the fact they sent them out with a return address, City Buchanan, like it was a Buchanan station area, and we changed that, and, and this other outfit is also endorsed by the West Virginia Municipal League. But these folks, I have no idea who they are. My recommendation to everyone is to toss that, and I've had a couple calls on it. I've had a couple calls on it.
There you go.
And it's been tossed.
Thank you, sir.
But thank you for reporting that, Ron. Appreciate it. Michael Calvert, you signed up to speak.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. President.
I was wondering what status was of the business, whole business from the network, Waters Networking, and also at the last council meeting, I asked Mr. Clemmons to define the security requirements and the proper costs, and I did not get an answer.
Both of those things are in process? In process.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Raisins Department Board reports, City Treasurer, Michael Dawes.
Mayor, Council, I have a fat dustpan. I'd bring it out today because I have a few housekeeping items that I need to bring to your all's attention. The first is budget resolution two thousand twelve dash oh one. That's a budget revision resolution. Looking through your packets, it's, I believe, the first three pages. It's a standard budget revision, which includes some revenues from grant monies that we've received, some specific donations for specific projects and expenditures, and also includes an insurance reimbursement for the fire chief's vehicle that was totaled. This is just used to adjust expenditures. It's pretty, again, standard budget revision, but I do want to make one notation. There is a new expenditure in the amount of $18,000 for the Farmers Market Pavilion. The city of Buchanan has already received 14,000 in donations for the project, and we anticipate future donations to cover the remaining cost of the project. I just bring this to your attention because this is a new expenditure. I will be part of this resolution, and ask for your consideration approval of the resolution.
Motion to approve resolution two thousand twelve dash oh one. And second, gentlemen, second. Further discussion? All in favor signify some saying aye. Those no.
Second, second item is two thousand twelve dash oh two, Community Participation Program Grant Resolution. This is kind of a bureaucratic thing downstate, if you will. It's a grant application that's required by the West Virginia Development Office. This is for money that was already directly approved from the governor's office in the amount of $15,000, if you recall, last year for our ladder truck repair expenses incurred by the fire department back in 2011. Again, I want to allude to the fact that this is really just a bureaucratic formality. I called down to the West Virginia Development Office. Since the governor directly kind of fast-tracked this money through, they need to come back for their records and kind of clean up the pieces of it, and it was done through a grant, application through the Community Participation Program. So they just need to have a file created, and we need to show them an application as a formality for their auditing purposes, and I can certainly understand some of the loopholes, or some of the loops you have to go through in that process. That does make mention that the city has a 10% match. I spoke to the lady downstate. We do not, we are not responsible for the 10% match. It just has to be included in there as indicated in the application to suit their auditing purposes at the development office. So I'll ask council to approve resolution two thousand twelve dash oh two.
Motion to approve two thousand twelve dash oh two. Second.
Second.
Motion made second. Further discussion? Not all in favor signify some saying aye. If there's no, let's have it.
The next item is in regards to the sanitary board loan. I think just for historical purposes, I'll ask Sam Ludlow to come up and explain the Brushy Fork line extension, and then I'll have some financial information and discussion later on. A little early, Sam.
Sorry. I have a drawing. Let's see. I'm not, it's a pretty small scale drawing. This is the Brushy Fork Valley, the airport, the old airport, proposed Army National Guard site, Buchanan, Toyota, Jenkins Ford, Westview Acres, Twin Oaks, local home park. Back in probably 1998, we initiated the project, sanitary board, to provide sewer service. Actually, it had been a primary project, and conditions at ETI, plastic pipe plant, had caused us to redirect our plans and do the Weston Road project first, and when we completed it, we planned to undertake this project, had an estimated cost of $500,000 in construction cost, and about $150,000 in support costs. That budget was to be financed with the support service costs being provided by the sanitary board, as well as $100,000 in construction support. We were to get a $150,000 grant from the county commission, and up to a $250,000 loan from the city of Buchanan, long-term loan, and as much as $150,000 in short-term financing from city council because the county commission money was uncertain in its timing. They committed to the money, but it might take a couple years to be able to insert that into the project. Well, we built the line, which included a major pump station, course named Boar underneath Porter H., Boar underneath the railroad, and dying into what was then the existing Weston Road sewer, a gravity sewer from the pump station all the way out to and provide service to Westview Acres and Meadowlands. At that time, both Westview Acres and Meadowlands had lagoon treatment facilities, and both were under order to be upgraded. They had both been attempting to deal with a situation for their communities for several years with the ET. We completed the project by 2000, early 2000. We did it for $350,000 construction cost instead of the $500,000. The county commission reduced their contribution to $100,000, but then in turn provided $50,000 for the lower Brushy Fork Collector Sewer, which provided service to the sites of the two car dealerships, and we got a, and we didn't need any of the interim financing that had been offered by the city council, and instead of the $250,000 in long-term financing, we only used $150,000. So $100,000 from sanitary board, $100,000 from county commission, and $150,000 from city council for a $350,000 project. And the sanitary board did provide the support services, project management. The green and pink are customers that are subject to the surcharge. The loan was to be paid with a $1.50 per thousand gallon usage surcharge. Certainly, when we undertook the project, we had expectation of increased activity in the valley, and, and there has been activity in Brushy Fork Valley, maybe not of the water use nature that, that we had anticipated. We have generated in a, generally speaking, about $6,000 a year in revenue from the customers from, from that surcharge, only from the surcharge. The terms and conditions of the loan were that the surcharge would be used to pay 4% interest and the principal on that loan. The payments to date are in the range of $66,000, I believe, and have essentially covered the interest during the last 12 years. I believe that, and the, and the sanitary board adopted a resolution or motion at their meeting today seeking at least revision of the terms of the, of the loan. We're not getting anywhere with, with the loan. And you have these, this set of customers that are disproportionately paying utility bills. I mean, we just, because of circumstance, we're able to do an extension out the Weston Road, a series of extensions, and those customers pay standard utility bills. We did an extension on Mudwick, and those customers pay standard utility bills. But because of the circumstances here and the arrangement of the financing, these customers are paying the surcharge. And I, I think that the project has had substantial positive impact, certainly on the community, but also for the city of Buchanan. The insurance auto auction is in the city limits. There's other activities. The airport is certainly a function that's a, an activity that the city participates in and benefits from. So I think that the investment that the city council made in, in this project has realized benefit for, for the city, and sanitary board is, is seeking some, some relief relative to this loan. Is that, that all right?
Thank you.
Sam, how many customers are affected by the surcharge?
Well, I'd say it's probably in the range of 65 to 75.
And what is the surcharge?
$1.50 per thousand gallons of water use.
And for, for the average customer, what would that mean as far as?
Probably about $6 a month.
$6 a month.
Four thousand gallon per month water consumption. And I, and I would say that the bulk, I mean, you have a few customers that may be fairly high water use customers, but most of them are below average, and 4,000, 4,500 gallons is considered to be typical water consumption.
And, and looking at the, the general fund, this is a, this is an item of this $147,000 that, that is continuous in our budget that we have to show. As Sam alluded to, at 4%, at 4% interest with the surcharge being applied only, we're, we're only paying the interest of that. We're, this is really going nowhere. We're stuck in neutral, and we've been stuck in neutral for over 13 years. Also, but understanding the fact that this is taxpayers' money that was loaned out of general fund for a project, I was a little apprehensive to, to forgive the entire loan. However, recognizing the importance of the water line out there and the potential for growth out there, and the fact that these individuals at Brushy Fork have been paying this for about 13 years with really honestly no, no end in sight, and in kind of an infinite amount of time unless there's major development that goes on out there, we're never going to realize this money. I spoke to the sanitary board this, this afternoon, and made a recommendation, which they concurred, and I'd like to make that same recommendation to council in the form of a motion for consideration. Now, if you'll bear with me, the, the motion is pretty specific, so I'd possibly like some entertainment with this. The motion would be to renegotiate the terms of the agreement to 0% interest and credit the year-to-date total amount paid in interest towards the principal. It would apply all future surcharge collections to the remaining principal balance and authorize our city attorney to amend ordinance two ninety-one, which was the actual agreement, outlining these new terms and agreement. Again, they've paid roughly around $66,300, all in interest over the past 13 years. If council does decide to, to make this a motion and direct the attorney to amend ordinance two ninety-one, that would be applied at all, to the principal. I would leave a remainder balance of about $80,700, and again, as Sam alluded to, what we're collecting roughly each year. This could finally realize an end to this situation in about 13 and a half years for those individuals, which would ultimately be almost 25 years they would have been paying on it. But the way that the agreement is structured, and I would recommend not changing it, would be, of course, once this, once this debt is paid off in principle, the Brushy Fork surcharge would go away. And that's all I have as a recommendation.
So what you're saying basically is to go back and re-amortize it at 0% for the definite period till the principal's paid off?
That's correct. I would make that, make that motion. Motion made. Is there a second? Second, then.
Are there, are there any other alternatives that would make sense as far as, I mean?
They, we, we kicked this around. We do have a motion of a second. We're open for discussion. We, we have kicked this around. One, one thing we can do is nothing, and let this surcharge ride forever. The other thing we could do is just write it off. Just, just simply write it off and be done with it. Or we can modify this and, and see some daylight at the end here, and that's, this is what we discuss, is what the board recommends to council, is that we zero the interest rate, let what's been paid stand against the principal, and work toward paying it off, get it off the books.
This is also a discussion I had with Richard Trent, our kind of independent CPA as well. It's something that I wanted to address when I first got on here and started asking some questions about it.
Richard Trent was not comfortable with a just total write-off.
No, he was not.
Further discussion?
This is something the city's financed. To make it clear, this is something the city is financed. It does not involve the, it does not involve any banks.
Right.
This is a-
City loan to the sanitary-
To the sanitary. And I remember, we've talked about some of this in the past, but I just want to make clear that the banks are involved in it. It's all strictly all cities.
All cities. I mean, you've heard, that carryover amount is not really that carryover amount because there's this $150,000, you know?
And there's a portion of it that is.
And it's, it just-
It's kind of artificial in a way.
Well, I think the thing that's interesting, if I'm hearing Sam's presentation correctly, that there were several other projects that were done, that, did the city advance money for the projects and then we not have a surcharge, Sam? Is that, is that my understanding wrong?
Well, the, the city not only has undertaken the basic Brushy Fork project, it costs $350,000, but, but we have an investment which, which is shown on this drawing. There were half a dozen additional projects that had been done subsequent to, to that initial project that have a value of three quarters of a million dollars. So that kind of investment has been made, most of which was, was funded by benefiting parties. And the city of Buchanan made no contribution to any of the rest of these. They only made the, the loan contribution to the initial project.
It was my understanding that a group of people from out of Meadowlands and the housing, Westfield Acres?
Westview Acres.
Westview Acres had actually come to a board meeting and asked to put a surcharge on it, but build this sewer. And so that's, this was the response to it. That's why it ended up being like it is. You understand that they had lagoons there, and, and the health department had told them they must. They were under order to do something about it. So it was-
Mayor, might I also observe that, recalling back 1998 as we were going through this, you'll recall from being on the sanitary board, the other interesting lobbyists relative to this discussion were the DNR and the Public Service Commission. Both state agencies were entirely on board. The Department of Health, everybody was on board with this. There was, we were abating these hazards, and, you know, this would not require tariff modification with the Public Service Commission. You might want to send a new copy of whatever ordinance we do to them for their information, but it would not require a tariff modification.
What else seconded motion that was made?
It was made, and it's already been made the second day. Thank you. You ready for a question? All in favor signify some saying aye.
Aye.
If there's no, let's have it.
Final item is the 2012, 2013 general fund budget. Council's been provided a draft copy of the proposed 2012, 13 budget as approved by the finance committee on February 7th, 2012. I'd ask council to please review the proposed draft and contact me anytime if you have any questions.
It's not in our package.
You don't have that, huh?
They will have it before they leave. Now, I have it right here.
Oh, you have it, okay.
It's ready to go.
It's Clemmons. Okay, I want to highlight a few things, but you'll be receiving that within the budget. And I think it's important to note some of these things that came out of committee. The city of Buchanan has a proposed balanced budget for 2012, 2013. The budget includes no changes in health insurance premiums and healthcare coverage for our employees. The budget accounts for an across-the-board $700 pay increase for our employees. The budget includes funding for three new police cruisers for our officers. The budget includes more funding for additional street paving and sidewalk projects for our citizens to safely travel both by vehicle and pedestrian. The budget includes funding for a street sweeper to keep our streets clean and assists with keeping our catch basins and stormwater runoff drainage open. The budget includes additional labor employed for the street department to assist with the large volume of projects slated for the 2012, 2013 year, including the Gateway East Main Street quarter improvements, safe routes to school sidewalks, Farmers Market Pavilion, and continued construction progress at the Public Safety Complex. The budget also includes continual funding for the Richie Street and Pocahontas stormwater line improvements, providing some continuous permanent relief to those affected property owners in the area. The budget anticipates appropriating additional funds for the reserve rainy day, also known as the municipal stabilization fund, summarizing the second year in a row that the city of Buchanan will be able to reserve funds for future emergencies and unanticipated expenses. The budget continues to provide each department with the operational expenses needed to function and provide our citizens with the best possible public service they can expect from our city, and the budget also incorporates most of the items prescribed in the adopted three-year financial plan and incorporates the scheduled departmental capital improvement projects outlined in the five-year capital improvements plan.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions for Michael? We'll get copies of the budget later, and have a look, and we'll schedule a budget meeting. We'll want to bring this back no later than the second meeting in March for official approval, because it has to be mailed to Charleston shortly thereafter. Thank you, Michael. Matt Gregor.
A quick announcement, and I'll get into the year-end report for the police department. I've provided you packets tonight. and provide it in your packets tonight. First off, I'm very pleased to announce the return of the Buchanan Citizens Police Academy. We had introduced this academy back in early two thousand and had three of the courses, the last one being about ten years ago in two thousand and two. Very happy to get back to it. I know I've had some interest in revisiting this. And we anticipate getting this started on March thirteenth, which will be a Tuesday of this year. Each of the classes, the course itself, will be a ten-week course, and each of the classes will be held Tuesday beginning on March thirteenth. And it should wrap up, I think, a couple ahead, May fifteenth, just right before we get into the strawberry festival. So again, it's a ten-week course. Each class will meet on Tuesday right here in council chambers in city hall and will be held from six p.m. to nine p.m. Like before, it's a unique opportunity for citizens, folks from the surrounding community, to get an insider's look at the operations of the police department. We showcase pretty much everything we do, everything from a general overview of the department. It's a good opportunity for folks to get to know several of our officers on a firsthand basis. We speak about laws, investigations, the court system, and just where exactly or specifically the Buchanan Police Department fits into the criminal justice system. We have a lot of displays that we put forth to those that attend, the things that help us to operate, and a lot of practical examples that we demonstrate as well, just everything from how we do our job on a day-to-day basis and on specific assignments. So I just, with that, with that announcement, I know we've got some press with this coming up, I'd just like to encourage all of you council, if you have the time, to take part in this. Anybody watching on Channel Three, I very much invite you to come out and take part in this, anybody in the audience. This is a wonderful opportunity. And again, I hope now that we're revisiting this after about a decade's lapse, something that we can keep having on an annual basis. We do have more information, if it's desired, on our website, BuchananPolice.com. We have an application and a flyer, and we're getting ready to upload a brochure and dedicate a page to it. So that's in the process. I will note that one thing I'm pleased to announce is, in revisiting this program, it aimed really at the assistance that you all have heard me talk about, the use of student volunteers in our partnership with Wesleyan College. We've had a student volunteer since last September. As you recall, her name is Madison McCosky. And Madison was instrumental in helping to design the curriculum and really update where we need to be today versus where we were with the class ten years ago. So I was very pleased to announce that that was a great collaboration. Madison continues to volunteer with us throughout the spring semester and will be very much involved with the class itself. So again, more information on this can be found at our website, or they can call me here at city hall Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to four-thirty, or my email. I'm accessible by email through our website.
Do you have the dates set?
Yes, sir. The class is going to begin on March thirteenth, and it will be every Tuesday, that's a Tuesday, it'll be every Tuesday for ten weeks ending on May fifteenth. The other thing that I'll go over tonight, as promised at the last council meeting, provided in your packets the annual report for the police department for two thousand and eleven. I won't go over line by line, I'll just highlight some of the, some of the more pertinent details from the report. From the activity page during two thousand and eleven, the police department's answered four thousand eight hundred and twenty calls for service. And you'll see that the report this year is broken down by each month, so you can see what we did in terms of activity and arrests each month of two thousand and eleven. Our hours were broken up as follows. Officers spent six hundred and thirty-six hours in community policing activities. Officers logged six thousand one hundred and ninety-five hours in road patrol. Two thousand sixty-two hours for traffic. That's everything from traffic accidents to traffic control parades and special details. Officers logged two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two hours in criminal investigations, two hundred and thirteen hours spent in court, one thousand seven hundred and ninety-two hours spent writing reports, and two thousand three hundred and forty-three hours in the other category, and as I've alluded to earlier, the other category is administrative in nature. That's everything that we do on the administrative end with the police department. Officers logged eighty-eight thousand ninety-eight miles on their patrol vehicles and took one hundred and eighty-eight accident reports, and this is compared to one hundred and sixty-six accident reports that were taken in two thousand and ten. Jumping down to criminal reports, officers took five hundred and forty-four criminal reports, and this is compared to three hundred and thirty-six criminal reports that were taken in two thousand and ten. So a pretty decent jump there. Reports that were cleared for two thousand and eleven, again, we took five hundred and forty-four criminal reports, three hundred and fourteen of those were cleared, showing a clearance rate of fifty-eight percent. A cleared case is anything that is either cleared by arrest, an arrest has been made, or the case may be unfounded, there's not enough evidence to substantiate that a crime occurred, or by exceptional means. And exceptional means could be anything from prosecution has been declined, a victim is unwilling to cooperate, or death of the victim or offender. Going to citations and arrests in the next couple pages. Again, we not only break it down by month to month, but we also break it down very specifically on what citation was written and how much of each, also what arrests was made and how much of each. The total traffic citations that were written in two thousand and eleven was eight hundred and fifteen, and this is compared to one thousand one hundred and eighteen that were written in two thousand and ten. The vast majority of the tickets, in fact, roughly a fourth of the tickets that were written in two thousand and eleven were for no insurance carried, for a number of two hundred and thirty. And a lot of times, when an officer writes a no insurance carried, it doesn't mean that they don't necessarily have insurance, although that is the case on some occasions. It just means that they don't have the insurance to show at the time, and the officer uses that, and a lot of times, it's a warning in and of itself, even though it's a citation, the individual is given the opportunity to bring their valid insurance in and show that at which time the citation is dismissed. Misdemeanor arrests made in two thousand and eleven for the police department was four hundred and ninety-seven. That's compared to three hundred and ninety-eight in two thousand and ten. And really, and you'll see the same pattern with felony arrests, when I get into that here in a couple of seconds. Really, you can sum the bulk of the arrests down to either theft issues or issues with substance abuse, whether that be alcohol abuse or drug abuse itself. And I'll highlight some of the arrests that led in misdemeanors. For instance, concerning alcohol or substance abuse, officers made fifty-five arrests for DUI first offense and twelve arrests for DUI second offense in two thousand and eleven. Officers also made thirty-eight arrests for possession of some type of drug, specifically possession of marijuana was thirty-one, and possession of all other controlled substances, everything other than marijuana was seven. The category that led in misdemeanor arrests in two thousand and eleven, I think we did a story on this through the press a while back, was shoplifting. There were seventy-four shoplifting arrests, and you can see that the bulk of these were the last three months of the year, with eighteen, thirteen, and twenty-one respectively. Concerning felony arrests, the Buchanan Police Department made ninety-two felony arrests in two thousand and eleven, and this is compared to one hundred and sixty-two felony arrests made in two thousand and ten. Again, mirroring a lot of the same issues that we saw in the misdemeanor category, really what led to felony arrests were much of the same, theft and substance abuse issues. Police Department made seventeen arrests for breaking and entering, ten arrests for grand larceny, and eleven arrests for fraudulent use of a credit card. Concerning substance abuse, the police department made three arrests for delivery of a controlled substance, five arrests for possession with intent to deliver, and fourteen arrests for conspiracy, which is tied into the issues pertaining to drugs. And those are the highlights as it pertains to the two thousand and eleven police department's year-end report, and that's all I have tonight unless there are questions.
Man, I'm a graduate from that first class of the Buchanan Police Academy. At that time, it was only open to the residents. What's, who's it open to now?
Really, I'm not going to limit it just specifically to residents, since I'm going to open up to any community member, obviously giving Buchanan and Upsher County folks preference, but certainly I'm not going to limit it to just-
And how many seats?
I'm going to keep it to about twenty or twenty-five, reason being, we have a lot of handouts that we give to participants in the class, and I just want to keep it manageable.
I want to encourage anybody like to take that class, is very good, very knowledgeable. The folks are very knowledgeable, will teach it. Of course, we've got different people now, since it's been ten years or longer. Anybody can take a class and give up our ten weeks, one night a week for ten weeks. It's, you learn a lot.
We do have an application now. We do, just to keep everything organized, we have anybody interested in participating, just fill out an application, and that just keeps us organized with how to contact folks and who's going to be involved. And we have those available here at city hall, or again, they can get them from the website or by emailing me.
Something like that clearance rate, is there a goal or something? I mean, is that, is fifty-eight percent high, or is that good, or are you shooting for something?
Yeah, I really don't have a set goal in place. I mean, anything really, when you get over fifty percent, you're doing a fairly good job. We've had some pretty successful clearance rates over the last several years, upwards of sixty, seventy percent. And so really what we have is a fair showing.
You have carry, don't you?
Yes, sir, we do. You know, some of the clearances that we had in two thousand and eleven could have been two thousand and ten, two thousand and nine, earlier cases. Some of the cases we opened in two thousand and eleven, we made clear January, February, and later in two thousand and twelve. So yeah, so you always have that as well.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Ludlow, got anything else you want to talk about?
Well, I have to report on the sanitary board meeting, I have to go over Brushy We did have some discussion about Brushy Fork. We also looked at our financial report, and maybe a little bit more than we usually do, looked at the breakdown, some of the line items, really looking at the impact of the belt press project on our overall budget. And except for the big ticket purchases of the major equipment, most of the cost of that project was supported by our operating budget, and really doesn't look like it has too much effect on our opportunity to do other things through the rest of the fiscal year. We did talk about the belt press a little bit as well. That probably will be a topic for a while as we learn how to make best use of it, but at the last meeting, I reported that we'd had startup and the equipment worked, but now we're beginning to get performance in production, and it appears to be very adequate in its performance. In a couple of days of operation a week, we're going to be able to get as good a performance as we had gotten from our earlier system. Also noted that we're still communicating with D E P about our NPDS permit. They continue to ask for additional information, and we're supplying that information, and over the next couple of months, expect to hear on a draft permit and have to react to that. We had completed the little sewer extension out at Twin Oaks, Meadowlands. Had reported that we were about to start that or were working on it during the last council meeting, but that's complete, and we have moved in and started work on the next phase of the Richie Street Storm Sewer. And we have laid pipe up out of the Wesleyan College residence, residence property, out of the property and up onto Pocahontas Street. A lot of water in some of the old drainage pipes. Not quite, runs as much water when it doesn't rain as when it does rain, so it's kind of an interesting situation. We also talked some about our maintenance procedures. We had a piece of equipment fail, blower, and that we used to aerate our sludge storage tank, and we replaced it, and they were kind enough to send in a troubleshooting representative and give us some advice on some preventive maintenance, which we appreciated their interest in that. And we did note that we had made the purchase of three small pickup trucks at the meeting a month ago. We were authorized to make a purchase of one truck, and in the investigation of that purchase, we felt like we had a very good opportunity. These three trucks had been in the first year of our five-year plan that Michael had had us develop, and we had budgeted ninety thousand dollars for these three trucks, and we made that purchase for fifty-six thousand five hundred and sixty. So we thought that was an opportunity that we needed to take advantage of. And unless you have more information about Brushy Fork, that's all.
Questions for Sam?
Tom here.
Thanks, Sam. Tom or Kelly, Palmston Water Plant Supervisor.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. We've got some activities at the plant, some of them, we're beginning to see some closure on some projects that's been lingering, and I'll update you on those. And we've got some new ones we're beginning to start on. Some of the older projects we've brought to you in the past, probably the biggest one is a filter crack concrete repair work at the water plant. Mr. Hall, and I believe that one of his engagements here told you we had accepted a bid on that. Spoke with him today. We anticipate the company will be on site early next week to start that repair project. Since he was here last and he wanted to accept the bid, and speaking with him today, we've brought a contractor in, a professional media company out of Pennsylvania. They've extracted the material that was fifty-six tons in the bed of this filter. We've got it tarped in the yard down there, and we're talking with Sam and Kelly and some other interested folks, maybe using this material for fill, where it would be appropriate as a means to get rid of it. So that's where we stand on that project. We think it's going to be at a closure hopefully by the middle of next month, is what we're hoping for, to put that project behind us. We've had an issue with a shortage of operators at the plant. We're seeing movement on that. We think we'll bring closure to that by the next water board meeting. We've accepted some applications. We're going to review those and bring some folks in for interviews probably early next week and make our recommendations to the water board early next month. That's been a lingering issue that we've finally seen some closure on. Some new things is happening. Kelly is transferring services on Randolph Street as time, weather, and workload permits, so they're working on that project. They've also started the six-inch water line at Twin Oaks. That's all going, is weather and time and projects permit. So those two things are developing as we speak. At the plant, because of the shortages I had in manpower, a developing problem that arose is water haulers last month set a record hauling- is water haulers, the last month set a record hauling water from the plant, and really overloaded my men, what few I had. And at the Water Board, we took a proposal to them to help alleviate some of the workload, got their approval to proceed with that. So, we hope within the next few days, or a week to ten days anyway, we will have some of that water hauling workload from the plant taken care of. So, that's ongoing as we talk. And then probably the final thing, last week, we have an annual Health Department inspection. They come in and check our treatment process, they check our records, make sure we're complying with all federal state drinking water standards. Got a very good response from them. They were there, they were very well pleased. I anticipate next week or early the week after, I'll receive the report from them, and I'll pass that on to the Water Board when they receive it. So, quite a few activities going on. No questions?
Questions, Tom? Thank you, Tom. Dave McCully.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of updates. I have submitted to Mr. Doss a proposed B and O, contractors' B and O tax form, which I think their Ambie and Michael have looked at it, and they're going to make some tweaks to it to get it ready. I would anticipate that should be off to the printer any time, and those forms, remember that tax actually goes into effect March one. So, before your next city council meeting, contractors need to be aware of that. Mayor, you asked me to look into Senate Bill 208, and I just got the information. I've been playing telephone tag with Debbie Price with the West Virginia Municipal League. As you might anticipate, Lisa Dooley has been pretty much nonstop at the Capitol complex lobbying for things positive for West Virginia municipalities. I spoke with Mrs. Price late this afternoon, and the position of the League relative to Senate Bill 208, which has to do with full repeal of the West Virginia Telecommunications Tax Act. I think one of the pieces that was put out talked about repeal of the West Virginia Telecommunications Act. It's just the Tax Act portion of the Telecommunications Act that is being repealed. Apparently, this tax that cable companies and other telecommunications providers pay to the state, not to municipalities, was totaling only about a hundred thousand dollars a year for the state. It was, according to Ms. Price, costing more to administer that act than the revenues that were coming in. So, nothing has changed relative to cities. The League has taken no position on it. I note on, under one of your correspondence items that you had provided me with too, you'd received certified mail notice within the last two weeks since the last council meeting from Michael Kellerman, talking about the end of our franchise. Again, that's nothing to get too excited about. Our current TV cable franchise does not expire until December thirty-one of 2014. Under federal law, there's a thirty-six-month to thirty-month notice that they're required to send out before the end of the franchise to start putting us in the mode of discussing an upcoming franchise. And as his letter indicates to you on that front, there'll be more coming in the months ahead from Southern Lincoln, Mr. Kellerman.
Dave, on that subject there, in his letter, he says that however, Section 626 H of the Cable Act provides for renewal of franchises without going through the extensive formal procedure specified in other places. What's up with that?
Yeah, there is a short circuit process that we have not followed before, and I wouldn't suggest that we follow it this time. I think we let them come back to us with a proposal. Every time that we have had this franchise renewal discussion, we've managed to come away with perks for our subscribers. So, maybe that perk, maybe the clout to get Channel Four back, it would be a timely thing to start discussions with them about that, or other services that we'd like to see added to expanded basic. I did talk with Peter Brown after you gave me that letter to try to get a feel as to where the Buchanan franchise was headed, or the Buchanan technical base for Southern Link was headed. And I'm told that there will be an announcement coming in the weeks ahead that is going to, I don't want to steal Peter's thunder or the company's thunder, but we're going to be very pleased about the new digital capabilities in the Buchanan Elkin system, things that we don't enjoy now, that is basically going to give us a, the entire expanded basic package would be digitalized instead of just certain services. So, we have that coming to us. The only other thing that I have prior to business I'm going to take up with you under tonight's strategic matters, and then I have something to take up with you in executive session as well. Mr. Smith, Burl Smith, is turning his attention away from the Wees Properties, now to the First Community Bank project. We've been waiting descriptions on that so that we can go through the ordinance to effect what we've already done physically, letting the paperwork from two and a half years ago catch up with us. So, I'm expecting that soon as well. And as soon as I have that information, I'll start on work for an ordinance to do a trade with First Community Bank, similar to what I want to take up with you when you do your second reading, Ordinance 362 on Progressive Bank. That's all I have, unless you all have questions for me.
Questions? Thanks, Dave. Brings us correspondence in your package, you have a letter from Timothy Mark Stewart. I wouldn't know Tim Stewart. But says on January seventh, I'll have completed my seven years of apartment rank of corporal with the Buchanan Police Department. Two thousand and three, I left the Buchanan Department, at which time I held a rank of corporal. I'm requesting the test and be returned to the rank of corporal. Is it appropriate for us to pass a motion? Or just be notified?
Just be notified.
Actually, just notified, I think, because we're already scheduled to examine. Okay, so you know that we have that, okay. And Robert Samples requests permission to hold a Rubber Ducky River Race at the Poundstone Walk Trail, April twenty-eighth, beginning at eleven o'clock. Would, you have the letter there before you entertain a motion to approve that? And a second. Before we vote, I want you to know that the Wounded Warrior 5K Run, which we approved last meeting, for May the fifth, that's graduation of college. And this lady came in and asked if we could change that, and I said, we'll bring it to the council meeting. She said, I just don't have time for that, I've got to send notices out. So, I gave her permission to move that to the twenty-eighth. I don't believe these two events will conflict, because they're going to be running from the, as you recall, from the fountain on campus, down to the walk trail and around the walk trail, and back to the fountain. So, motion made in second to approve this, all in favor of Signify, so, saying aye. I have it. We already talked about the Kellerman letter. Classic Wheels Car Club's requesting permission to have portions of Main and Spring Street shut down for a fifty-sixties theme, classic car cruise in. Details are below, they want to block two Main Street blocks stretching from Canal to Florida, and the use of the Spring Street block, from four PM until eleven PM on Saturday, July the twenty-eighth. You have any questions about this? We've got two gentlemen back here who are experts on this.
What Spring Street lot do they want to use?
I guess the corner lot.
Is that one the corner lot? Of course, the other one's not, so hopefully it'll be dropped by then.
Yeah. No, we're off.
We balked that off in the past.
Yes.
Probably not disallowed, though.
Well, four PM to eleven PM, that's.
Low traffic.
Yeah, low traffic times. Canal Street, Florida Street. What's your play? Motion made. Second. And a second. Discussion, all in favor of Signify, so, saying aye. I have it. I have it. I told you guys, you wouldn't have to worry about that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cruise on.
Consent agenda is minutes of regular meeting on February second. Building and wiring permits, payment of bills, approval and application for Latham House Restoration Transportation Grant. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a second. Motion made in second. All in favor of Signify, so, saying aye.
Aye.
I have it. I have it. Strategic issues for discussion, vote second reading, Ordinance 362. Dave?
I'll show you this map one more time, and then we won't have to look at it again.
We can give that and back to Sam.
Mr. Ludlow.
He'll roll it up.
Those engineers and ens, they'll take a mile, I tell you. I'll make this quick, because Mr. Doss is alma mater, is playing on national TV at nine o'clock, and I know he wants to get home and watch the nightmares. As I pointed out the last two meetings, this is a proposed swap. I think back in November, you received a letter from Progressive Bank again. There is an alley that goes nowhere, that is in back of our old fire hall, that was not included in the property that was auctioned back in 2006. The bank would like to develop this sixteen-by-fifty-seven-foot alley as part of its business. And in exchange, we have proposed that they deed to the city an eight-foot-by-one-hundred-and-sixty-four-foot parcel that is immediately adjacent to a current public alley. You approved this, Ordinance 362 on first reading at the last council meeting, and unless you direct otherwise, I'm just going to read this by caption only. This is Ordinance Number 362 of the City of Buchanan, an ordinance approving the city's conveyance to Progressive Bank N A of that certain lot tract or parcel of land containing nine hundred and twelve square feet, more or less, owned by the city and being a public alley, in trade and exchange with that certain strip of land containing one thousand three hundred and twelve square feet, more or less, immediately abutting another public alley owned by the city, said strip being titled with Progressive Bank N A, and to be conveyed to the city, all of said real estate being situated in the City of Buchanan, Buchanan Corporation District, Upsher County, West Virginia. If you approve this tonight, thirty days after this, we can have our closing with the bank, exchange deeds in anticipation that you will react favorably to this on second reading. Mr. Heinz has already begun assisting me in the preparation of the deeds to effect this. It's my recommendation that you pass it on second reading.
Motion to approve, Ordinance Number 362 on second and final reading. So moved. Motion made. Second. And a second. Further discussion? All in favor of Signify, so, saying aye.
Aye.
I have it. Thank you. Status of property, corner of Main and South, Spring Streets. Anybody have anything they want to say relative to that?
I had asked that this item be placed on the agenda, because it's something that I don't want us to let sleep. I mean, that piece of property needs a decision by council. You brought up last time that we really have not had an official resolution by council of what to do with that. I've asked Michael to investigate, has any, you know, what would we do with that piece of property financially wise? If it was sold, do any parts of our budget rely on the sale of that property? What revenue streams do we have to come in and do projects? We want to be more forward-thinking as a city council and do projects instead of just hold our own. And yet, I share the vision of that piece of property as being just a little diamond of our town as developed, and there's an awful lot of effort that's going into that. And I look at towns like Asheville, North Carolina, and similar small-town cities that are really, really developed. And my vision for this is something I very much would like us to do and go forward with. But those community members, there's an awful lot of community members that are behind the effort to make this go forward. You know, we sort of have to cut the reins loose on this or hold the reins back. And I'd like to ask Michael to maybe, can you give us a little financial insight on what it is that we would?
Sure. In regards to your email, the potential sell of the property, I mean, there's been discussion of what exactly, that would yield us some, I've heard, anywhere between a hundred, two hundred, even up to three hundred thousand dollars. Wouldn't really know that without a proper appraisal and to look into that. It currently does not impact our budget. It would be a kind of a newfound revenue for us, but it would be a one-time revenue. It wouldn't be anything, of course, like a tax or a fee that would be continuous. The one-time sell of that would provide the city with an opportunity to maybe explore increasing some infrastructure projects, doing some more paving projects, doing some sidewalk projects. It could also assist with the police and fire departments in vehicle purchases or equipment purchases, that might be somewhat expensive. But again, once that sell is completed, that money was spent, we would have nothing there. Of course, to sell the lot, we would be subject to whoever bought that lot, in essence, some building, what they would be able to put on that lot, who would know? But that's where it would stand right now. It did not, it did not impact, did not impact any real decisions as far as this current fiscal budget is concerned, because everything was appropriated and projects were set forward. Certainly something that was not included in the proposed budget that you'll have before you after the meeting tonight. It would just be a newfound revenue stream that would support the council and the city an opportunity to use that money however they wanted to for any desire that they wanted to, for any special project, or anything else they wanted to. We could put that in the budget to help maybe pay as you go for some equipment purchases or something that maybe we might have to budget or extend for a period of time, or may have to do a lease purchase option on.
I think as Scott said, I mean, I think it represents a really important hinge or space there. And, you know, we, at the college, we've seen what a, I don't know, focal point or a structural thing can do to change people's focus and that kind of thing. It's kind of interesting. I really think it represents a space that could help us develop further down both streets and all areas. And, yeah, I mean, it's something I really hope can kind of go forward, but, yeah, I think it needs to get through sort of a, either a, we're into it or we're not into it kind of thing.
How do we move forward as a council to bring this to, yes, let's develop this lot in conjunction with community plans and what's going forward today?
Well, you know, we had some discussion months ago about what we would do with this, and I thought we, I don't guess we passed a motion one way or the other, but we sort of agreed amongst us that let's hold off and see what possibilities there are. We could very quickly sell it, and as Michael observes, that's a short-term fix. But the plan that the Create Buchanan Group has put before us is a, will have long-term, long-term impact on the community. It's in the center of town. It will be something that I think's a very worthy project. And I guess we could, I could entertain a motion to approve the plan for Town Square that Create Buchanan presented.
Well, we did approve last council meeting to have Jay Harper and the Create Buchanan work with our city treasurer to look at a potential grant.
Yep.
So, I mean, I think that's enough for right now. You know, we had a meeting Monday. Kenny and Rich and I were there with the Development Authority, and it was for all the members of Development Authority, plus some other individuals and city council and county commissioners and so forth, and unfortunately, county commissioner in Charleston. But we're looking at a strategic plan for the county and the City of Buchanan, and, you know, what is our, what is our vision for the future? And those of us who remember Morgantown, they had the vision for 2000, and Morgantown's just done really phenomenal things up there. And I think we have opportunities to take a look at that piece of property, but we'll look at it in context with what else is going on. We've got the Latham House project, we've got the East Gateway project, we've got the farmer's market. There's a lot of exciting things going on, and I agree with Scott, we need to have a forum to discuss this further and involve the community more. And I don't think we need a motion, but we already sort of have a process. Last council meeting, we said, go ahead and look at the possible grant and bring it back to us.
I brought it up last meeting.
Yeah.
About what to do with this corner. Before we got too deep into grants and projects and stuff for that corner, because we had never decided what to do with it. Initially, at the settlement of the C V B lawsuit, that property was going to be sold to pay the C V B for what they'd invested in that. That money's been paid back, correct? That's correct. That's what, to my knowledge, that. According to Michael, with this year's budget coming up, we've got money to do projects with, we've got money to put in the rainy day fund, for lack of a better word, let's call it something else. We seem to have, the cash flow is moving smoothly now. So, it would be appropriate, I guess, to go ahead with that grant process. That's what we approved last meeting, or you all did, I voted against it because we weren't sure what we would do with the corner. And like Dave said, maybe that's where it needs to go for right now. where it needs to go for right now, to see what they do with that. I was never, ever against the Town Square.
I understand.
I just wanted to make sure what we're going to do with that corner before we got too deep into that grant process.
And that letter.
I don't want to see them apply for a grant, and then let's not take it. The chance to get it again is pretty slow.
And the letter that Michael and Jay wrote.
We'll send out a letter of interest at this point.
Yeah, it looks good, and I think it explains the project well, what the potential of it is.
And that's an arts and cultural grant that Mike was...
Yes.
Because a lot of what, you know, when you get grants, sometimes if you don't want to take a grant, it doesn't affect, depending on what area you're going after.
At some point, though, we will have to commit.
Exactly. I was thinking, right now, we're talking about tacit approval, and yet it all sounds good, it smells good, but at some point in time, it's got to be a 100-year lease or whatever to develop that piece of property.
Let them develop that for the city.
We have a really good chance of actually getting this grant. They're wanting to get into Upsher County. They haven't really done anything in Upsher County, so we feel pretty good about it.
The other thing I might note is, at least the preliminary plan shows a good portion of that lot as a parking. So it would be revenue generating to an extent. So one thing we've done, if you've noticed, we've put parking meters on the gravel portion. And that came out of an observation by Tim Smith, that there was as much revenue out of three parking meters in the Martino Lot as there was out of all the parking meters in the North Spring Street Lot. So his recommendation was, let's put, that's where people want to park, let's put some meters down there and allow them to park at meters, and let's see what kind of revenue we get. So I don't go by there that often to see number of cars in that new area, but it is available now for metered parking. Where an awful lot of our spaces have been reserved spaces, this allows more flexibility, right next to the post office, right in the heart of downtown. So it might be extremely popular and would continue to be revenue generating for, as long as those are...
Again, my concern is, at what point in time do we say it's now time to make a motion to do something concrete with this, or something more permanent than a decision was?
Well, it seems to me, excuse me, Scott, it seems to me that everybody's, seems to be on board with doing this. If we pass a motion, get off the slide here, pass a motion one way or the other, we're going to permit the Crete Buchanan to pursue this grant, and we'll commit to building a Town Square there, based on the plans they submitted. If the grant fails, we can reconsider. But I think they need to know where we stand. I think for their, when we get beyond the letter of intent state and write the grant, they're going to have to be able to say city council is on board with this.
And the match for the grant that they applied and they plan to apply for is, in fact, the value of the lot. So, you know, that's, the city is not going to put any cash in it, but they are going to put up a piece of property.
Didn't Jay say that the labor actually would be paid for by the...
Yeah, they're going to contract that.
Right. So we would be involved, our city employees, because that's, our city folks are tied up enough.
Yeah, we're not committing employees.
You've got to get back on business.
And we're not committing any money. We're giving them an opportunity to make this work. And if it falls, then we can take another look at the lot.
One thing I just, as a side note, is you may know that South Spring Street is not really a street. South Spring Street was a lot. North Spring Street was a street, but South Spring Street isn't. And consequently, it's narrow. We all know it's got a very narrow sidewalk on one side. And actually, on the side towards this lot that we're talking about, there is no sidewalk. So one of the advantages of hanging on to this lot, or no matter what you do with it, would be to be able to effectively keep a sidewalk on that side of the street. Because otherwise, you have no sidewalk on the post office side in that lot, unless you create one. So I think there's some advantages to the city in the long term for hanging on to this.
Kenny, I'd like to, an opportunity to look at the budget and vote on this next meeting.
Very good. Very good. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
Then let's move along. Comments and announcements. Michael?
No comments.
Dave Thomas?
Just a couple of comments. One is that I was very pleased with the report that Michael gave from the budget, and, again, want to highlight that you did add one person for Mr. Arnold's Street Department.
Yes.
I mean, I think that's very positive. You know, there's always a hidden cost for grants, and we've had an awful lot of work to do. And the, when they work on these grants or individual workers, it takes away from some of the current, you know, things we have to do on a daily basis. Going back to what Ron Pugh said about the home service for the water lines, I just want to also caution people, what is that? Caution people when they get phone calls from a different kind of charities and so forth. I received one last week, probably about 8:45, 9 o'clock at night, and I don't want to name the group, but it was a national group that was asking money for children that have cancer in hospitals and do their toys and so forth. And it sounds really great, but I asked the individual, I said, how much of what I will give actually goes to the charity? And what is your administrative cost? She indicated the administrative cost was 85% of what you give. So those, I mean, charities are wonderful and foundations are wonderful, but when you get these telemarketing people calling you, you ought to ask how much your money's going to actually go to the benefit of what they're asking for. And sometimes it will shock you that it's a very small percentage. And there are a lot of great organizations out there. They're doing phenomenal work for people that need it and causes that need it. But ask them questions. And you can also check that stuff on the internet, too, and they'll show you what different charities will give as far as the money going from yourself to the actual people that need it. I just think people need to be aware of that.
Thank you, Dave. Pam Capari called. She's had a fever. She's not feeling well, so she didn't show up. John, what you got?
Just to expand on what Dave was saying, there are a lot of charities right in our own city and county that need your help every day. So, yeah, always find ways to help those folks out, too.
Scott?
On a key off of Matt's report for 2011, really saddens me, and I'm sure saddens most everybody out there, that the preponderance of our crime is based around substance abuse. We've got several pages that you didn't see in the public that are part of our report, and it is pervasive. And by no means the work that Matt and his officers have done have really only touched the tip of the iceberg. And for those in our community that are struggling with themselves or a loved one that has a substance abuse issue, I can only strongly suggest and hope and pray that you can seek some kind of benefit and treatment for that. There are AA chapters here in town. I know there are referral services that can be found through the county health department, St. Joe's Hospital, through your physicians. There are a number of avenues for those who are struggling with that. And if you have a loved one or somebody out there, please get some help because it's a tough thing to do. And, you know, we're living with it every day. Just to say it. Anyway, thanks to Matt and his officers.
Skeeter?
Rich?
Just a couple of dates. Remember that particular for candidates, next Tuesday morning at 9:00 AM is the drawing for position on the ballot. That will be held at the courthouse, both for county elections and for city elections. So if you're interested, courthouse next Tuesday at 9:00 AM. The next item on my calendar is, apparently the mayor's not going to be here, so I get to cut the ribbon at Tudor's Biscuit World at 5:00 on the 27th.
AM?
So you can come out and cut a biscuit, or whatever.
AM or PM?
PM.
Really?
Yes. They're going to have some extended hours. So this is the beginning of their extended hours. Election Day for the community will be May 8th. And just to follow up on what Dave kind of mentioned, and I think it's an issue that's going to start coming back as I look at building permits and look at people with zoning permits and so on. It's a season for people wanting to hire somebody to come in and do something, build something, add on, fix this, fix that, whatever. Be sure that your contractor has a license, a West Virginia license there to provide that. It's supposed to be up to date. If you're not sure, contact us. We'll be glad to check it for you. But we find, every year, I find somebody who has hired a contractor, paid them X number of dollars upfront, which I don't recommend at all, and then they never see him again. So, you know, good contractors should be able to do at least a good portion of the work without being paid upfront. And then they should certainly have their West Virginia State Contractors License. And if they don't, I think I'd keep looking for my contractor. That's all I have.
Okay. I would entertain a motion that completes our agenda, but we have to talk about Beach Street a little bit. So I'd entertain a motion as we enter into executive session.
Some of them.
Six, nine, eight days for property vendors.
Same.
May 6th, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it. Thank you all for coming out.